Dave was and been very active in the in the Lincolnville world on Select Board, many committees. He was also been most recently on the Midco Solid Waste Board with myself and Allison. If you knew Dave at all, he's really a fun character to work with. Dave's the kind of character you, when you ask a question, you're going to get a straight answer, and we're going to miss him deeply. But to his family, Darlene, his wife, his children, his grandchildren, we just want to extend our most heartfelt condolences. There were no words that we could use that could make this hurt any less, but please know that Dave is in our hearts and will remain there for a long time, and we miss you already, Dave. Again, I just wanted to make that front end footnote. With that, we will go into our agenda for the first item, public input and non-agenda items. Janice, I presume we have none, is that correct? You're muted, Janice.
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you very much. The second item would be the approval of the board minutes from our September 1st, 2020 Board Meeting. Any comments or motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept that board minutes from September 1st, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion, roll call vote, Allison? Hi, Allison waved hi. Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Bob, aye, five zero. Thank you. We have one item on our consent agenda tonight, which is the approval of the renewal Vittler license for Blaze Camden at five Bayview Landing. Any discussion or motion to, I'm sorry, are there any objections to this item on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, that item is hereby approved. To item four, which are two action items, the first of which is for the approval of the town meeting warrant for November 3rd, 2020, which is in your packet. Any discussion on that warrant, Select Board members? Mark?
I have a question, were there any further discussions with about that situation? Jeremy?
What situation are you talking about?
He's talking about the, I assume you're talking about the woman whose property this is subject to-
Right, I'm talking about the, the, the taking.
Mrs. Pennington.
Yeah, I have not had any further discussions, I was waiting, kind of having plenty for a cool moth period a little bit, Mark, honestly, and I was gonna chat with Bill Kelly, but I'm gonna be back out to her in the next week.
Good.
Okay. My second question would be, if, if discussions proceed with a positive note, then how do we remove this from the ballot, or has it just become a non-issue?
I would defer to Bill on that, I believe it would become a non-issue, but Bill, I mean.
Yeah, any settlement agreement would make, if we have to actually put through the voting, because there will be some absentee ballots, will have no legal effect.
Good, all right.
But it'll still be on the ballot, because the ballot will be printed at that point, most likely. Okay.
Great. Any other comments or a motion to accept the warrant language? Mark?
I'll make a motion that we accept the town meeting warrant for November 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Motion made, the second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Taylor? Aye.
And Bob, aye, five zero. Thank you very much. The second action item tonight is the acceptance of the payment of $18,650 from MDOT for the drainage easement on the public landing taken by eminent domain. Any questions, comments, or motion? Mark?
My impression is this is just a procedural thing, because we've always agreed to have that drain put in down the public landing as part of the reconstruction along Route 1 there. So this is, this is not controversial, it's just a procedural thing, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and we were, so we spoke with the project manager about this, and we were pretty much informed that much like, this is, we're sort of on the reverse side of the eminent domain issue. So, you know, MDOT goes through their process, it's very dissimilar to the process that we've had to go through with the butters to the Route 105 sidewalk where we need to, we needed to negotiate with them. We were just sort of told at the very end, we're doing a taking, this is the value of this land, and we've taken it from you, and now you just need to accept this check.
Right. And this is very similar to the process that was applied to all the homeowners on Route 1 North, of which I was one. And this one, though, has two components, it has an eminent domain piece, it also has a temporary easement piece during construction, that's why there are two pieces of this $18,000, as delineated in our packet. Any other discussion from the Select Board? Mark?
I'll just, just to clarify, people, this is so that MDOT can do a drain down the harbor walkway, and this they needed to do, which we agreed to do. I believe they're also going to help us screws up that harbor walkway as part of the procedure, and this is a very positive thing. So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept payment of $18,650 from MDOT for a drainage easement on the public landing taken by eminent domain.
Second.
Motion made, the second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob, aye, five zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, which is our discussion items, the first of the six items we have is the discussion of the animal control practice around stray cats, and a discussion with Paws and welcoming this evening, Ms. Shelley Butler, good to see you, Shelley.
Good to see all of you.
Audra, do you want to lead?
Certainly. So the, the sort of issue around the town's practice of not accepting stray cats or going and, you know, picking up stray cats, I think has been a subject of discussion in the community over the summer, and so we were requested to look into this and figure out if we could sort of update this practice so that we are more able to help out people who have issues with cats. And part of that was reaching out to Shelley, just to kind of get a better idea of what Paws did around, you know, the management of cats that might be stray or feral within the community, and just find out if there was, you know, there was, you know, an issue that predates both Shelley and myself's of, you know, an animal being dropped off in the past, and, you know, being sort of costly to provide veterinary care to that animal, and we both recognize that it predates us, and, you know, we're more than happy to work together so that, you know, moving forward, there's more communication between Paws and the town around, you know, those sorts of situations, so that, you know, everybody's sort of on the same page. But I, you know, I think that, you know, we can, we can sort of work with Paws on figuring out how we want to handle stray cats, so that we're able to assist community members that call in with issues. And I just thought, more broadly, it would be good to sort of bring Shelley in, and she can sort of, you know, explain what Paws practices in terms of when, you know, a stray or feral cat is brought in to their facility, and answer any questions that you might have generally about, you know, what they do and the relationship with the town. Just for background, I know the Select Board is all aware of this, but, you know, for anybody who's watching and paying attention, by statute, all municipalities have to have a shelter that we contract with to accept animals. There's a lot of rules around dogs and cats, it's a little bit more open, because cats are allowed to roam, but still, you know, there, there needs to be some parameters in place around how we handle cats in our community. So, you know, Paws is the shelter that we contract with to, you know, accept animals, and Shelley can talk to you a little bit more about that relationship and some of their practices, as well as answer any questions.
Great. Shelley, do you want to comment on and follow Audra?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to answer specific questions, or just give you a short generalization of what we do specific to at-large cats.
Why don't you do that? Do that.
Can I ask one quick?
Yes, Jenna, go ahead.
Hey, Shelley, how are you?
I'm good, Jenna, how are you?
I'm well, I just, I, I found myself, because I get questions all the time, with people who sort of feel like they're playing, um, that sort of chicken with the shelter, the police, and just don't have any idea what to do, and so that was, I think, kind of the catalyst for this, and this is how they're making my title off, and again, I was totally concerned, like you have to say, just to give it a final bit of context.
As hell, thank you. Well, I can tell you my understanding of the contract that is in place, like Audrey said, I can only speak to what I've been a part of over the last five years, private to that, we have a lot of knowledge either. At present, we are contractually obligated to each other, once we hear your animal shelter of choice, as the animal shelter of your town, we accept all strays and at-large animals from citizens and from the municipality, from the animal control officer, which the Town of Camden is the animal, is the police department, which whoever's designated at the time to do that. Our facility is open to the Camden Police Department 24/7, they have a special code to get into the intake area to bring any stray cats, any or dogs into this shelter, whenever they, whenever they have them. During business hours, we accept stray animals and animals at large, and animal surrenders from residents of Camden as well, we verify residency, and then we can take them in as well. We don't go out and get animals, this is the animal control officer's responsibility to do that. I have not been told specifically that the Town of Camden's animal control will not allow me to get cats, and then we have had animal control bring cats to us over the last five years since I have been there. The number is not high, it was much higher with dogs, but it has happened, usually it's residents that bring them to us, and they bring as many back into their natural homes as possible.
Allison, I'm sorry, Allison, go ahead.
So what, do you, do you got a lot of cats coming to you that are not able to be rehomed or feral cats? What's the difference, you go through an evaluation process, or whether, you know, a cat can be rehomed or, I think it's not able to be rehomed, or?
Sure, every animal is able to be rehomed unless it has a serious medical condition or is simply not capable of it.
Okay, so-
Our placement rate is around 99% with cats coming to the shelter.
That's great.
Yep. So are there not that many just wild, wild cats in Camden, or is it that you're not having a problem?
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't say how many wild, wild cats are in Camden, I can tell you how many stray cats come through our doors, by town, but I can't tell you how many are actually out there. I can give you a, for instance, so far this year, we have had eighteen, eighteen cats come, have stray and or at-large cats to date in Camden. Last year, we had twice that many come through, COVID has played a, played a role in the number that, you know, come to the shelter for about three months, well, so we have, you know, several that come through, but I don't know how many are really out there, and this is, I don't know many feral cat colonies in the Town of Camden, that doesn't mean there's not some people being outdoor cats.
And I think, just for maybe a bit of context, so Shelley was explaining to me that when I was in Rockland, we contracted with Pope Memorial, and they had a trap neuter release program, so that was, that was sort of their preferred method for, you know, handling, you know, feral or stray cats, and Paws is, it's different, they find a home for every cat, and Shelley said that for cats that would traditionally be considered feral, she works very closely with local farms to find a home for, you know, cats that are, you know, considered, would be considered feral.
We call them working cats.
Jenna, Jenna, do you want, one second, one second, Allison, Jenna, do you have something you wanted to say when I picked Allison, or were you finished?
I think that, I think that we kind of having the ACO or Randy in this conversation would be helpful. What I hear a lot from the ACO is that it's almost, like I said before, it's just sort of, this cyclical thing of, it's a shelter, it's the ACO, but we just, we can't do anything or we won't do anything.
Okay.
And it's always been our policy, and I'm, what I'm hearing from Shelley is that it's kind of come from our part.
Okay.
Yeah, I can tell you, Randy and I had a conversation, it might have been a month ago, kind of stand still, and we talked about that, we went over the contract that has been in place, it was since I've been here, and to my knowledge, this is the same contract that hasn't changed in probably 10 years. So my understanding is that they're really in personal preference not to go out to help cats, that's kind of how it explains to me that that is not how the contract reads.
Okay. Mark?
One of the questions that came up in the last, the discussion we had about this is that the town would be responsible for veterinary care, and was concerned, some people were concerned about the cost of that, so I'm sort of curious, what sort of cost you've seen for the eighteen cats in the last year, the thirty-six the year before?
Yeah, sure. As a, as a general practice, and as part of our contract, we're not charging for any medical care per animal, the contract very specifically states that the municipality shall obtain appropriate veterinary care for an injured or ill animal prior to coming to the animal shelter, as we are not a veterinary hospital, so if you would pick up an animal that's still alive and injured, it would be your responsibility to take it to a veterinary practice or an emergency clinic, and that, that, the medical expense would be at, you know, at your expense should you do that. I can tell you that nine out of 10 times this has happened, the appropriate, usually animal emergency, I'll call me at any hour of night, and let me know that an injured animal has come in, we usually work out the appropriate thing to do. Since the five years that I've been here, I have, I have veterinary perform a high amount of expensive veterinary care on any animal, we've done tri-ops, we've done quality of life care, we keep them alive, you know, keep them going, you know, we open up the next day, we have another person, you know, we can do that, so it's really just kind of tri-ops until we get the animal to the shelter. The biggest bill that I know that has gone to another, another town was around four or five hundred dollars, and the town expected that to come there, they knew the animal was injured, they gave me a heads up about it, said please send us the bill, and then we took the animal from there and took care of additional care after the, the first, the first tri-op.
This is, this is good then, so this is, this takes away that kind of concern, for the most part, I mean, there, there could be options, but it's not going to be a serious option, so for me, I don't see any reason why not to expand the program to make sure we're taking care of the cats as well as the dogs.
Okay.
I'll leave that up to people to discuss as well.
Thanks, Mark. Allison?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of the animal control officer addressing cats, some of that being for the cats' welfare, and some of that being just the general concern about having potentially unvaccinated animals running around the community. One of the things that I've had people express concern about in the past, and I've sort of been slowly educated on, by, actually, from agents even, my interactions with them, is the detrimental impact that cats have on the environment through the killing, especially of native songbirds, and cats, of course, are not a native species. I'm a little surprised to hear the philosophy about, about the working cats and trying to just send them to barns, and I, I think maybe some different, different shelters have different philosophies on that, I think, but what are, I mean, outdoor cats and the impact on the environment, and whether it's responsible to be releasing them, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that's a discussion for an animal owner, you know, as an, as an outdoor cat owner, it's your responsibility to make sure your cat is acting appropriately, and, you know, I can't, I can't control other people's cats. We don't release cats out to the wild that don't have owners, they go back to an owner who is 100% responsible for the cat and its behavior, so I think that conversation would have to do with the animal owners and not the animal shelter, who doesn't release cats that can go out. I do not advocate for outdoor cats, but that's, you know, again, I can't control what other people do. I don't, nobody leaves our shelter without being fully vaccinated and healthy, so we are not spreading disease, and we are not making unwanted cat populations, it is the state law to vaccinate your cat for release, and no animal enters our shelter without being fully vaccinated.
Okay.
It's definitely better to take them in, have them spayed and neutered, cats that are running around doing their own thing, no matter what.
Right, right.
I mean, definitely seems preferable to have them passed through Paws before going back out there.
Right. Taylor, you want to make any comment, or are you okay with this? And it sounds like the President's in favor of the ACO taking care of-
Right, and yeah, and I guess just in summary, this is more of a practice than a policy, and after, you know, speaking with Shelley and getting sort of clarity on, you know, how we would interact moving forward, I think both Randy and myself are very comfortable with, you know, having, you know, taking a bigger role in bringing cats to Paws, if that's what people need.
Right, great. Thank you, Shelley, thank you very much for all your input. Do you have a, Allison?
Just another quick side note, I don't know if there's anybody there doing the audio, but I am getting feedback from, and this is not for you, Shelley, sorry, this is for people in the conference room, I'm hearing that from people trying to watch the meeting, that those of us on Zoom are very difficult to hear. I imagine there's been some kind of change in the conference room, I can hear the people in the conference room much better than I've been able to in the past meetings, but I think it's, a couple people tell me it's very, it was very difficult to hear Shelley, very difficult to hear me, anyway.
All right, thank you, Allison, we'll have to check that out, because we haven't had this problem before. Bruce, want to check it while you're-
No, I'm trying.
-shut the volume. Anyway, thank you, Shelley, thank you very much for showing up and giving us your input, appreciate it very much.
Absolutely, I'm here for you, thanks.
All right, thanks. Going on to our next discussion item, which is the discussion about the, general discussion about the committee structure and citizen participation, as, as highlighted in italics here, it's basically just a, an ongoing reexamination of the town's committee structure to identify opportunities for encouraging more participation amongst the community. Audra, do you want to lead that discussion, or leave it to us?
Yeah, and I, I guess sort of the backdrop of this is, you know, COVID and having months where we were sort of, you know, the bare bones of who could meet, so Select Board and, you know, Planning Board only if necessary, and sort of opening back up that, you know, that back up in a limited fashion, you know, Zoom meetings and sort of the pressure that's put on, you know, staff to, to organize these meetings and be present for them, and figuring out who's meeting and are they meeting about items that need to be actioned, you know, that's sort of gotten to this whole broader discussion about the fact that, you know, with the exception of the two boards, which are the Personnel Board and the Planning Board, or, sorry, Personnel Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, so the three boards, and then the two commissions we have, the rest of the committees are really creations of the Select Board-
Right.
-to help you do your job.
Right.
So you create committees, you direct committees, so if they're, if they're working and doing what you want them to do, wonderful, if they're not for any reason, you have the ability to sort of change how that works. And I think, given the COVID situation, we've all kind of are rethinking about how this works now, and how it's going to work moving forward. So I think that's sort of been the backdrop to all of this, and I think we've had some other recent examples of sort of groups that were formed for a specific purpose, and, and it's worked really well, and it's been nimble, and it's allowed sort of community members or people, you know, that wouldn't normally have the opportunity to participate because they can't make a three-year time commitment to being on a committee, it's given them the opportunity to contribute skills and knowledge and, you know, other really valuable things to the town that they wouldn't normally be able to contribute under the sort of rigid committee system that we have. And I think a good example of that is the broadband working group.
Task force.
The task force, and some of the people that, you know, they wouldn't be able to commit to, say, being on CDAC to look at an issue like this, but they can commit, you know, over a short period of time, a few hours here and there. So, you know, I think looking at all these things is, you know, got us all thinking about how can we sort of do this a little bit better or differently, and that's sort of the backdrop to it, but I would also say that this is just an initial sort of discussion.
Right.
Moving forward, we have a lot of really great committee members that are some of our most, you know, active volunteers and participants in anything town-related, so I think it'd be really important to speak to a lot of those people moving forward to figure out, you know, what, what you all might want to do.
Okay, good intro. Allison?
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is sort of a conversation that we should be having every so often, just in terms of like, how can we make public engagement work better? How can we make, you know, communication from the town work better? How can we make it easier to be involved in town government and provide input or ideas, whether that be providing input on a Select Board agenda item, or providing input through some kind of a committee or some kind of a project? Some of the best work that we've had done in town has come from committees, so I'm in no way anti-committee, there are a lot of areas where the committees, just as they are, they make a lot of sense, they contribute a lot, people, people that are on the committee seem happy with how it's going, and that's, that's great. I also feel, though, that sometimes there has been a little bit of the feeling of people either not feeling appreciated, they haven't felt connected to the Select Board, maybe the Select Board's had trouble keeping up with what they are doing, some of, some of what the committees are doing, it's, it's like they were formed a long time ago for a specific purpose, and town government and town staffing has evolved a little bit, and we're, but we're still kind of using all the same categories, maybe there are different committees that need to be formed, or I think it would be good for us, and also even as part of sort of a charter discussion, to look at like, how town has evolved over the past 20 years, and how public participation can look different, and where it may need to change. We don't get, as, I, I get a lot of feedback from people who are not on a town committee, don't have time for the way that town committees currently work, they want to contribute to something like, Brad is a perfect example, they have a lot of skill there, or maybe they're an artist, and they want to paint the trash cans or something. And typically, what we've done is we've said, okay, well, if you want to contribute, if you want to get involved in town government in one of these things, and we say, well, get on this or that town committee. And what occurred from a number of people who ended up quitting, is that it was more, you know, they just, they just wanted to paint trash cans, or they just wanted to come up with an idea for one or two shows that the Opera House, but didn't, you know, the structure of the way our committees work was a little bit rigid, and so I don't, it's nothing that we're going to solve tonight, but even using our new website, I think, as an opportunity for people to either do some kind of a survey, or to allow people to sign up and kind of provide some details about ways that they might be able to contribute to the town, skills that they have that might be relevant. I, I would like us to look for some kind of reimagining of some different ways that we could allow for more flexible participation, that might be more project-based, and not always having to have everything go through my-
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yep. Other comments? Jenna?
I agree with Allison, definitely, I also think that it would be a great thing to perhaps develop a survey for current sitting committee members about some of the deficits that COVID has revealed, as far as their meetings, and what would make things operate more, more smoothly for them in general, because I think that it, I don't want- Because I think that it, I don't want to undermine, and I know nobody here does, the great work of our committees. But I also think that it's important to offer different engagement opportunities, as Allison said, that I want, I want to make sure that we're keeping in mind the folks that have been involved for, in many cases, a long period of time, volunteered a lot of their time and efforts to see progress through. So I think there's a, there's a potentially a good way to make those two things dovetail. And I honestly think that as much as I often thought, if you have a survey, I think in this case, a survey or two might be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Jenna. Mark, you had your hand up.
I was just going to add, since I've been doing this, the committees, former Conservation Commission, the Downtown Design Team, Energy Committee, among the other ones I go to, have done amazing things for the town. And I think any way we can encourage people to donate time, because it's hard to get volunteers in this day and ages. It's a wonderful thing, but what Allison suggests, having shorter-term, short-project situations for people to get involved in maybe as one-offs, is also a terrific idea. And so anything we can do to encourage people to stay involved and be more involved is a great idea.
Right. Thank you, Mark. Any other comments, Taylor?
Yeah, I, well, I totally agree. I think that this is actually the perfect time to look at committee structure and structure of other boards as well, given that we've kind of been on pause for a while and everyone's been forced to either not meet and make things work or meet in a different way. And I also think that this, at some level, should, would be a good discussion with the Charter Commission in some way before they get too far down the line. I know we're going to talk about meeting with them, but...
Yes.
I love the idea of a survey, particularly pointed at active committee members now, so we can get an idea of if they feel like things are going well or if they have thoughts on how to maybe streamline the way that our system works.
Right. I'd have to agree and to magnify a couple of points Allison's already made. You know, we've, we've tried hard to change things a little bit with having work plans for committees we discuss once a year to talk about what we, the Select Board, per our committee guidelines documented, we updated and refurbished last year. But there was, we would have an idea of where we thought we would need the various committees' help and the committees have tried certainly to focus on that. But I know I have seen in a couple of cases where committees who have a tendency of meeting every month, it turns out that hasn't always been effective because there may, there may be an ebb and flow of things that happen. We live in a very dynamic environment, so it could be a little slow for a little bit of a time period in certain committees. On the other hand, there are important items that come up during the year that there's no opportunity for them easily to get to the Select Board except through the liaison, which, to, to change that work plan. And I, you know, these are very valuable people and you want to make sure we're using them, you know, for their talent and not exaggerating a little bit, wasting their time. And to me, Camden is so rich with talent across the 5,000 people or so in this town in various knowledge areas, specialty knowledge areas, to the point that was made about having people who are, you know, in our database or wherever that we can utilize for a specialty item, like, again, we keep using this broadband one as an example, but there are many others. There are people in this town that have huge financial acumen, they have specialty technical acumen. We've used some of them on this building, we've used some of them for various other elements that we've attacked over this last year. I, I think it'd be great to try to, without, you know, trying to put a hand grenade in the committee process, I don't suggest that, but to reinforce it by having a specialty task force or call it what you want, to focus on some of these specialty areas with specialty people. I think it's a great discussion and we should continue discussing it as we, as we go forward. Allison?
The other thing is that sometimes opportunities or issues come up, sorry.
Your light fell over.
Come very quickly. And we don't, the, there are times when it doesn't work to be able to say, okay, well, this would be an appropriate thing for the CDAC to weigh in on. And so we'll wait until when a CDAC meeting next, okay? And then by the time you have another Select Board meeting after that, it's, like, there are things where we would want some input on, but just meeting with those schedules can be a little bit challenging. And so trying to find ways for rapid response engagement, I think makes sense sometimes.
Great.
Another thing, I don't know if now would be the right time to address it, but as some of the town is reopening, schools are reopening and people are, you know, we're starting to talk about what the best way to meet is, I think we should discuss whether, you know, how committees should be meeting. Today I was caught off guard by the, you know, I went to try to watch the design team meeting and that wasn't on YouTube and it turns out that they decided to meet in the conference room. And I'm, I'm nervous, I do believe the town should be mostly catering to the, I guess, the most vulnerable population, so I'm not, or the most concerned or for people who are not comfortable meeting in public. I think it's really important that we don't have a rigid system that excludes people who are not willing or comfortable meeting in the conference room. And so since we know the hybrid model does take some extra work, I'm a little concerned just leaving it up to the committees, whether they want to meet in person or not, because that could end up excluding a lot of people who aren't really comfortable.
Okay, okay. Good point. I think we should address that and probably work on a draft of clarity for publication probably next week. I think we could, we could do that, make sure we're clear with what can and can't be done and what, this gets a little complicated as far as, you know, what is state regulation versus personal preference and blah, blah, blah. But yeah, good point, Allison, I think it absolutely has to be looked at and we will. But great discussion and we should keep this going forward as we look at committee stuff. Because we have, when do we have committee reassignment? We're behind the curve on that one.
That's something that we typically would have done last month or the month before.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. So I think the next, the next, probably next time would be to have a discussion on that when we have, or if any, needs for any task force or groups, that kind of thing we could have during that agenda item. With that, I want to move on to the third item, which is the survey with the November 3 election discussion. Again, Audra, do you want to lead into that one?
Sure. So we talked about this a little bit and I just, I can't recall if we, if I had just spoken to you individually about it or if this is a broader discussion that we've had as a group, so because I, I don't...
It was a broad discussion.
Yeah, I don't think there was.
No, it wasn't broad.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to bring up sort of the idea, you know, as a group and for you all to talk about, you know, sort of that it's a presidential election, it gives us an opportunity to get, you know, really a pretty broad cross-section of the community if we have any sort of survey-type questions or, you know, things that we would like to get opinions back from the community on. And one of the things that sort of keeps coming to the front of my mind are some of these, you know, we're, we're just about at a point where we're getting ready to start doing some engineering work on some pretty big-ticket infrastructure projects. And, you know, I think it could be really good information to try to get a sense from, you know, a broad cross-section of the community in terms of what, what are the sorts of things that they feel are important and just to know before we make a big investment in engineering and then get to a point where we're going to need to go to voters and ask for approval for some of these larger projects if it's something that, you know, is important for them or is a priority for them. So, you know, I think that, you know, a survey during the November 3 election would be a good opportunity for that. But it's, you know, it's a very sort of tricky thing to do in asking questions that are going to give you the information that you really need instead of being too general or too specific and ending up with a bunch of information isn't very usable.
It's more disinformation at that point.
Right. So anyway, I just wanted to have a broad discussion with you all about it. We, you know, sort of the window of opportunity is narrowing a little bit. It wouldn't be, it would just be sort of paper surveys that go out because we're getting a lot of requests for absentee ballots, so we would just sort of stuff them in the envelope with everything and hope that...
It comes back.
When it comes back, and it'd have to be hand-counted, so...
I see.
But I mean, it's not...
Not impossible.
Not impossible.
Not impossible. But it seems to me, I, I'm sorry, Mark, why don't you go ahead?
Do you have, do you have a form that you would like to do? Is it something like, these are the different projects the town would like to work on, what are your priorities? You know, broadband, fiber broadband, redoing the tennis courts, you know, fixing, do you have a list of items you'd like to put on there? Because I'm nervous about surveys because if you ask the wrong questions or ask the questions the wrong way, you get information that's not...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's a very scientific procedure to do it right.
Right.
And if you just sort of stick it in there and do it quickly, we may get the wrong answers to the wrong questions.
Yeah. Well put, Mark, well put, we're on the same page. Jenna, did you have your hand up?
I think with the number of absentee ballot questions already gone out, and I would assume Audra has been turned in, that we perhaps would be missing a fairly large segment of the population. I don't have a problem with this, but I do agree with everyone who says that, who feels, well, Mark primarily, who feels that we need to be very careful with the types of questions that we put out there. I also think, well, this is a great opportunity because of voter turnout, people are going to be really overwhelmed by this election. And I'm hearing that people are overwhelmed by the postage on their absentee ballots and not knowing what camps to put on and those kinds of things. And I would hate for us to add a paper that puts the scales as maybe trickles that sound, but I'm of two very distinct minds about it personally. I know it isn't that helpful, but that's my, my input.
Thank you, very good, Jenna.
I love surveys. This, I was a sociology major and did lots of this. Mark is exactly right that it's very much a science. I feel like every other time the town has done this, it has been really problematic. And, you know, I felt frustrated as a, as a voter and then frustrated later on having information that I felt was distorted, then used, you know, for or against a certain thing. I, I would suggest that we take the time in between this meeting and the next meeting and if any of us can think of, you know, good questions that could actually be, you know, written out and ready for review for our next Select Board meeting, you know, in the packet and everything, then, then we do that, whether that be, you know, town staff or each of us individually. I have a few things that I would like to ask. One of the things that comes to mind is a follow-up on historic preservation ordinance and the, you know, we got this overwhelming support for the demolition delay ordinance. Maybe this would be the time to just quickly ask people if, you know, they support further protections for historic buildings or something like that. Rockport recently put out, you know, asking if they want, people wanted a consumer fireworks ban. We already have that in Camden, but it was kind of like, you know, some of these things are simple enough that you can ask people, you know, would you like town staff to work on drafting blah, blah, blah to put before voters?
Right.
Or maybe a good way we could do that. Would you like, you know, town to amend the floodplain ordinance or the shoreline zoning, whatever? You know, to further prepare for climate change.
Okay.
I think there are some things that we could ask that people would understand, but that we have to put the time in to get it right.
Any comment?
I love the idea. I also love surveys. I wonder, you know, when, because the idea, if people send these back, would it be in a separate envelope from the absentee ballot envelope? Would it have to be separated or does it come in the same package?
Could be in the same one.
Yeah, we'd just go in the same envelope.
Okay. I think Jenna has a really great point about being concerned about the postage on that package, that that might throw people off. So I would want to know for sure that, you know, it's not going to cause people to have to put more postage on than they would normally have to or just be really clear about that. My other thought is, you know, I know it's been tried in the past, but I wonder if, you know, is there a downside to spending some more time on it and sending these out with the April tax bill, for example, something like that?
Right, right.
I'm just thinking it loud. I'm totally supportive of the idea and I already know that I have questions that I'd like to, you know, get broader community input on.
Yep, I would agree. Probably closest to comments made, I agree with, with Mark, is that I, I've seen surveys backfire if you don't do it whatever correctly really means. And that means it takes time and I think time is of the essence right now. So I, to Taylor's point, I do consider the timing. However, all that said, I think it's, it's a great idea. It's a, it's a tool for getting indications, but sometimes indications can be skewed and we got to be careful with that, depending on how you ask the question. The more black and white it is, the easier it is for people to be able to, you know, to wrestle with. But fine, let's, let's, let's bring to the October 6 Select Board meeting, any of these collective ideas, submit them to Audra for collection so we can take a look at them at that point and see which ones might make some sense and which ones may not.
And I do, I do have a draft, but I feel like tonight's not the time to get into it. But I guess it follows along with the identified priorities and tries to sort of, the, the goal is to figure out of the identified priorities, which are sort of consistent with community sentiment...
Right.
And drill down a little bit into them and figure out of those broad priorities, what are some of the projects within them.
Makes sense, makes sense. Maybe you could send that out as a, as a, as a draft.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if, when you're ready, if you want to send it to us so we can be thinking about that from what you're looking at before the next meeting. That'd be great.
Sounds good. We do have a three-week hiatus for one of those times in the year when we have a three-week time period to play with this. Great, that's what we'll do. Onto item D, which is discussion on the yacht club lease agreement. Just as, as an intro there, just the Select Board understands that I am a member of the yacht club, so from my perspective, I have a conflict of interest. Unless, unless the Select Board members disagree with me, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion and appoint Ms. McCullar to lead the discussion on this item and I will sit here quietly for the first time in my life. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, Allison, before you start, I, I just noticed, I want to introduce Meredith Scheck, who's joined us, who is the Commodore of the yacht club, and also Arthur Adelberg, who is the Vice Commodore, just as an intro. Please, Allison.
Great, well, this is exciting. It only took three and a half years for me to be up. Actually, I haven't been vice chair for that long, but this is officially the first time that I've ever gotten to do this. So, yeah, I think this is just sort of a good opportunity to follow along with what the Select Board has been trying to do with a number of town institutions. And of course, the yacht club is one of the most important, certainly most, one of the longest-standing. And I think a lot of us have realized we don't know that much about the yacht club. I realize that I have answered questions wrong in the past personally. People do come to, I will only speak for myself, but I get a lot of questions from people about, you know, whether the public can walk down there, what the arrangement is, how would somebody join the yacht club? And I'm just frequently in the position of having to say, ooh, that's not our jurisdiction at all, or I don't know the answer, or maybe we'll... at all, or I don't know the answer, or maybe we'll ask this when, when the lease comes up for discussion, which is something that often happens with other town-owned properties that are deed restricted and used for certain purposes. We have workshops with the library board of trustees from time to time. So one of the things when we were, we planned, oh, we should put the yacht club on here so we can all just be a little more up to speed on some of the things that you guys are doing, some of the programs that you have, any thoughts there have been on, you know, climate change, adaptation, sea level rise, that kind of thing? And then also, in so doing, we all had a chance, maybe for the first time, to read through that lease. And I see it's very different than, than many leases where it actually just goes into perpetuity. And any party would need 20 years' notice to terminate that. So that's a little different, but basically, I, I think the thinking is here that we could sort of, this would be the first in maybe a few discussions, just to make sure that the town has a good understanding of what, what you all are doing, what you want people to know, you know, how we can help with the long term planning for that building. And I would invite either of you to share anything that, that you would want to. Before, oh, it sounds like you're still muted, Meredith.
It says the host has unmuted me.
Oh, good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm going to talk about two of the things that you mentioned and then get to the, to the lease, because there always seems to be confusion about the lease arrangement that you probably get questions on from time to time. So we are here to represent, you know, the long line of commodores and vice commodores. The club has been a vital part of this community since 1906. And while we do operate as a private club, we feel that we can offer a number of benefits to the town of Camden. Among them is our new sailing school, which is open to both, to members of the public and offers scholarships to needy applicants. I will say this, this summer, the sailing school operated under, you know, COVID restrictions, so we only had 102 children that we put through sailing school during summer, all of the summer. Four of those 102 were sons or daughters of our members. So there's a fairly broad participation among community youth as sailors as well as apprentice instructors as they move up the ladder of leadership in the organization. That, the program, the new sailing program is run by its own board of directors and has public members, you can have up to two members of the public serving on its board. However, there's only one, but that can be up to here. Another thing that we do is we hold a series weekly during the summer on what we call the Sunset Seminar Series, which is open to the public at no charge, held inside the clubhouse building so that we have access to our audio media system. And those speakers usually focus on the arts, voting, environmental issues, or things that are historical for this part of the Knobstaple Bay region. We also serve as a hub for voting activities, attracting numerous yachts, both power and sail to Camden Harbor, so there are sailors in their boat. I would say that we make annual lease payments under our lease arrangement to the town of Camden in 2020. That amount was $23,015.10. And additionally, the club makes a payment to the main department of agriculture, conservation, and forestry for the submerged land lease that would otherwise be paid by Camden but has not been assigned to us. And in 2020, that, that payment was for $934.34. Additionally, we have served as, for a long time, as a venue for the eighth grade dance. And in the past, the occasional meetings of the harbor committee were held in our facility, as was what used to be a special summer meeting of the Camden Selective. Seems like you're meeting much more frequently than just having a summer meeting. We feel that we've been a responsible steward of the property, going well beyond what is typically expected of a property lesson. Just this week, work is starting on excavation and overhaul of the club's parking lot infrastructure at a cost to the club in excess of $100,000. We also incurred considerable expense in maintaining and upgrading the clubhouse building, which is historic landmark, as well as other facilities on the property. And with the increasing exposure to flooding associated with rising sea levels, the club, and this is particularly in Arches area, as vice commodore, has been in contact with the town in planning for any flood mitigation issues that we might consider as similar to the, the topics that have led the town to focus on rising, rising seas as well as port. Lastly, just a word about, about the lease is there always seems to be some confusion. Just a few months ago in the spring, the town official mentioned to us just in passing that the town believed that the lease is no longer in effect, having been terminated in 2011. And he pointed out that that's invalid. And as you said, Article 2 of the lease provides that it is used automatically April 1 of each year, subject only to the condition that either party may terminate it without cause upon 20 years prior notice to the other party. Thus, the only way it could have terminated in 2011 would be if one of the parties had given notice of termination in 1991, which was when the lease came into being. So as, as leader party, as it's not given any notice, the lease continues to renew automatically and remains in that. We were told back in June that this matter had been reviewed by the town attorney, who agreed with our reading of the lease. With that, Arthur and I would be pleased to answer any questions that, that you might have. And I, and I will tell you on the question of walking the property, since you mentioned that it is something that people in the town do, and we just encourage them, if they're going to do it, to do it not while club activities are taking place. In other words, not during lunchtime or when the sailing school was active, but after hours, you know, five o'clock or six o'clock, there are frequently people from town walking around. You know, we do have safety signs posted along the sea wall because it's not fenced at all, and that remains a concern. So, you know, I'm, I'm frequently down there late in the afternoon, and if I see someone I don't know, I'll introduce myself and ask them, please to be careful near the sea wall, you know, especially if I have small children.
I'd be glad, and Arthur would be glad to answer any other questions that you may have this evening, or, or any other.
I have a question, Bob.
I have a couple, but I'm wondering, I have my fellow board members. Want to go first, Mark?
Sure, I'll, I'll say a couple things about it. It's a unique situation. I've looked over the paperwork we have in our packet. Obviously, the land was a donation many, many years ago for the town. And I have to say, I have been one of those people that's walked down there and walked out on the shore and looked at it. And one of the reasons is, is I know that the, the club is open to the public and can be leased to the public, because I got married there 16 years ago. And actually, I lived in Los Angeles at the time, but my wife and I decided we wanted to be married in Camden before we were able to move here, because we loved it. And we called up, and the people were very gracious, allowed us to lease the property. We had a terrific wedding, perfect time, and we go back and visit quite frequently because it's got great memories for us. The one thing I would say about the conversation is sometimes there are some things that if they're not broke, you know, don't, don't try and fix it. I think things have, have worked well. It appears that the, the people that run the club are taking the responsibility of maintaining it, fixing it, keeping it up, you know, expenses that the town may have, which is, which is great, and also dealing with sea rise, which is something that's a big concern to all of us. I'm very happy to hear and see the paperwork and the discussions going on.
Thank you.
Jenna, did I see your hand? Yes, you did. Hi, Meredith, how are you?
Hi, Jen.
I'm Jenna Luthner. I grew up, I guess I didn't grow up at the waterfront, but my dad owned it. My brother was an assistant harbor master when he was 16. Our family has always felt that the yacht club is extraordinarily exclusive to the public. It says it right on the sign, and I understand a private club, but I do feel that with a town-owned property, and I, I read your letter, I understand the, the programs that are offered to the public, that there is a real slippery slope there. I feel tremendously anxious about going down there just to take a picture of the harbor for the town's Facebook page. As a, as, as a public citizen, as a member of the select board, that doesn't change. I feel like I'm in a place where I'm not allowed or wanted, and I feel like there's a little bit of a chasm between having a town-owned space, leased or not, and then having people feel that way. And I have had people come to me that have said they also feel that way. And so I think there's, that you guys do a terrific job with maintenance. I'd love to know how many members you have right now?
We have 285 members and 10 honorary members.
And how does a resident go about becoming a member?
Okay, you have to be sponsored by a current member of the club and have two seconders co-sponsored with, all, all members of the club.
Okay, well, that answers a few of, confirms a few of the questions, concerns that I've had, but thank you, I appreciate you answering.
Thanks.
Yeah, and Taylor, did you want to say anything? It's hard for me to see you all the way.
Yeah, well, I was going to ask the membership question that Jenna did, so she took care of that for me. Thank you, Jenna. I'm curious, Meredith, how many, the residency of makeup of the membership, are all members residents of Camden or majority?
No, no, they are not. No, they are not. I, I happen to believe, but, but not all of our members are. Some of our members are, you know, part-year residents, some are part-year residents from Rockport or Comston or Lincolnville or Northport, but they got into the club because they were sponsored by other, by other members. And there's, there's no restriction at all on, on being a local resident, nor was there, nor was there ever in the club's history. The original founders of the club were largely for, you know, using an old-fashioned term, they were rustecambers. They were, they were not residents of Camden except for, you know, the height of the summer sailing season.
Thank you. And just, I guess a question for whomever can answer it. The, the lease obviously in 91 started at $12,000 annually as an increase to $23,000 and change. The lease talks about a yearly adjustment because of the Consumer Price Index. I'm assuming that accounts for all of the increase. I just wonder every year, who, who specifically is it that looks at that to make sure we adjust the CPI appropriately for that year's payment?
I, I can't answer that question. The town would have to, have to answer that. I will say that, that originally we were paying a dollar to the town, and it's spread up over the years, but over the life of this lease, it's been adjusted. The town does that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I appreciate the conversation tonight. I, I grew up sailing and granted, I started at the Rockport Boat Club, but that doesn't mean I don't love the Camden Yacht Club. And, you know, I do think that you guys provide a great space and an asset to the community. I would be remiss, though, if I, if I didn't just mention that I have had a couple of citizens approach me leading up to this conversation, that they were concerned only in that, you know, a beautiful, a beautiful piece of waterfront space and concerned about the, the value of what that is to the town and being sure that, that, obviously, I think we all want the yacht club there, but is the town receiving a fair compensation for that? And I, and I certainly consider your letter that we received from you, Meredith and Arthur, that you go above and beyond that of a typical lessee, and I would agree with that. Things like the six-figure parking lot restoration, and I know a number of other things that the yacht club does are, are factors that aren't necessarily numbers on a bottom line that do matter. So I just, I only bring that up to make sure that, you know, it's known that that's a concern that's been brought up to me.
Yeah. I, I will say that, you know, we, obviously not, not this year, but we have always urged up the club grounds on the Fourth of July for anybody who wants to come down to the picnic dinner and watch the fireworks, and it's a great vantage point. And, you know, certainly I'll bring back to the board, you know, comments from tonight that, that perhaps there are some other things that we could do, you know, above and beyond what we're doing already to the community, that would enhance that feeling of, you know, a link to the, a stronger link to the public.
If I could just add, that some of the, some of the consternation that may be being experienced by people, members of the public who are going by the club, may have to do with the fact that because of COVID, there is a sign out, has been a sign out this summer restricting access, but that is strictly COVID-related. That would not normally be there. It will go away when a little COVID pandemic is over.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, if you were to go down there this week and for the next probably seven or eight weeks through the middle of November, you're going to find the, the property, well, the parking, the total parking lot can drive down blocked off while construction takes place. So not even members are supposed to be down there. Anyone who's a boat owner is going to be accessing the launch by standing on the dock over at Lion Horse and calling back to the yacht club for the, for the launch, so the club is really very much closed down for about the next seven or eight weeks.
It might make, look a little unfriendly, but it's for safety purposes.
Thanks for that. I, I do think that, I, I've heard a lot of, of similar things, having grown up in the community as well and not being part of the sailing program as a child. The yacht club always felt very off limits to me, and that, you know, could just be something in my head, but the, you know, the sign out front that says, "Members and guests only" is pretty straightforward. It's not welcoming. I remember my, my kids, even when they, they did one year of sailing camp there, subsequently they've been at the, at the Rockport Boat Club because the Camden one always fills up way too fast. And, but even just going down there to pick up my kid at sailing camp, it was like, members and guests. and guests only." Oh, shoot, hold on, you know, what am I allowed to do? And I, you know, I talked to a couple of club members about it, and they said, "Oh, that's ridiculous, Allison, it's, everybody's welcome." And I said, "That's, that is, you know, that, that might be the way you feel from the inside, but it's, for people that are not a part of it, it's, it doesn't really feel like that a lot of the time." I've had people, you know, there's a lot of town property that gets leased and a lot of deed restrictions that sometimes go along with that. We understand, you know, the yacht, yacht club was given to the town for the purpose of being a yacht club and, you know, to be used exclusively as, as, I think it says, for yacht club and other community purposes. You know, it's why the lease says in there that you're going to continue, as has been the practice, to open up some things to non-members. But I do wonder if there are opportunities to expand some of the connection with the community. I mean, I don't even know if, what one would, there's nothing on the website that says, "If you wanted to be a member, you could be on this list and people might review you," or, you know, are there opportunities for expanding the sailing camp program so that, you know, Camden residents could have some kind of guaranteed access? And I, I do think it's very, we've been trying to figure out this lease situation a little bit because it's, it's just so atypical for anything else that we have with the town. As part of our charter, we are not allowed to sign long-term agreements that commit the town beyond one year. So we kind of have this all, like, you know, in our brain that this isn't, anything that's going to be a long-term commitment, whether it be our 20-year contract with Revision Energy, or just, you know, the agreement with any number of other entities, that all has to go to a town vote. And so it doesn't, we haven't been able to find that this ever did go to a town vote, and I think maybe that's, could be part of what, maybe it did, and we just can't find it in the records, but I think people haven't felt like there's an opportunity to provide feedback to the yacht club. And I think it would, it would be good for everybody if we could try, in the select board sort of being the catalyst, I think, to try to improve communication between, you know, the rest of the community and the yacht club, and maybe there are opportunities to work together a little bit more on that.
We would welcome the opportunity, really, we would.
Thank you so much for coming, and sorry to have caught you off guard if we did with that agenda item, just.
That's okay.
You know, learn a little more.
Part of our job, too. And I will say, just for the benefit of some of you there, that I'm also a member of the Rockport Boat Club.
Allison, Bill Kelly wants to say something.
I see Bill, and I yield the floor to Bill.
Oh, I just wanted to make a brief comment because sometimes silence can be misunderstood for an agreement. I did read in the letter from the yacht club that I had created an opinion regarding the lease, and I had not done that. I'm happy to at some point, should the board direct me to, but I just wanted to not sit here quietly with what might be misunderstood for affirmation. So that's my small caveat. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Well, thank you so much for joining us, and we'll continue the conversation, and good luck on the very important work happening.
Thank you, thank you. Hope it stays in the budget.
Yeah, great half of the town budget, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, good night.
Good night. Thank you, Meredith. Thank you, Arthur. Take care, guys. Good job, Allison. As we move on to our next item, which is our updates, Audra, do you want to go first, or do you want the select board to go first?
You can all go first.
All right. Mark?
Not much, just the Camden Opera House has continued to have very successful shows. I believe almost all of them have sold out, different kinds, and that's because they're keeping it very safe. They're limited to 45 tickets per event, so everybody is spaced out and is COVID-safe. Masks are required, but the shows have been terrific, there've been a tremendous variety of people, and they're, they're there. They are in the works of also coming back with another show out at the Camden Snowboard Works they worked on earlier this year, which was also very successful. As Allison mentioned, downtown design team did meet today. They were scheduled to be on YouTube, not on Zoom because they met in the meeting, and for some reason, the YouTube connection did not work, so I wasn't able to see it. But I know they were discussing signage, the proliferation of signs in town and working on that, and, and they're continuing to develop and finish up the, the work on the mural for the wall next to the Mechanics Street parking lot, which of course is a private thing, they've raised all the money, and so one of these days we'll see a nice mural, which will begin the process. And it won't be a static note, something that we can build on. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Jenna, do you have anything?
I'm going to skip it today.
Okay, cool. Allison?
Yes, I just thought I would relay a little bit from the group that's been working on the skate park. I'm sure some have noticed the, all the pieces of it sitting in the parking lot. They have gotten a couple experts to come in and, and check out the equipment that's left over. There was a lot of concern that maybe all of it would need to be scrapped, but now the feeling is that at least the half-pipe should be able to be saved, if not more of it. We still, you know, the, the long-term location of the skate park is, of course, a question for another day, but in the meantime, it's going to be in that parking lot sort of as a staging area to do some work on it, and the hope is among the group that's been working on it that they'd like to, even though the skate park may not be there forever, they'd like to organize, and are organizing, a little community cleanup day. So they'll be there doing a little bit of volunteer work, maybe painting the fence, cleaning up some of the general debris that's accumulated. So anybody that is interested in getting involved in that can contact Rafi Baeza, and, or Rick Seidel, I think Rick's still involved in this, right, Audra?
Yes.
Is he still the town contact person?
Yes.
Is there a date for that?
So, yeah, that is all from, oh, and the time capsule. Bill, luckily, there's, there, you can, it's either going to be going in the ground this, at the end of this week or mid-next week, so there is still time if you want to get a few things in. So, Audra, you can write your thing, don't worry, you haven't missed it.
Cool.
One thing I just want to jump in with what Allison says, there are a group of people working on the skate park, and, and the great thing about that's exactly what we were talking about during the committee discussion, that it's, it's, it's a short-term project with people donating specific time. They didn't have, we didn't have to have a commission or a committee to do it, and it's, they've really jumped in and are working hard to really make this a wonderful situation. So thanks to all of you.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
It's a perfect example of it, that sometimes, you know, we could, we could have said, "Well, let's save this to the Parks and Rec Committee." And it's not that that necessarily would have been God, but to try to, sometimes you also have a set amount of energy to have all of these, especially, it's a bunch of students that are, that are involved, too, and so it may not be a reality for them to be able to sit through lots of meetings and talk about the, you know, potential boat launch at Fogg Bridge or whatever else the, the committee has to go through. But yes, I definitely think.
Thank you, thank you, gang. Mr. Taylor, anything from your side?
Thank you, Bob.
From my perspective, just another update, I did speak with Sam and Siemens Dave St. Laurent, and it sounds like we're going to have their reports for all the buildings and facilities they, with their performance contracting options probably before the end of the month. So then we'll have activity after that. So that's good, it's moving along quite well. Other than that, that's it from my perspective. Ms. Audra?
All right, so I just wanted to sort of give a little bit of an update on COVID-related issues. So we had a weekend where, you know, generally, we try to get the officers on duty out on foot patrols in the downtown to assist with enforcement of mask-wearing, helping, you know, shop owners and restaurateurs, you know, with any issues or concerns they might have with the enforcement of the mask mandate and physical distancing and all that. We did have a weekend where we had two staff who there were, there was a possible COVID exposure in the line of duty, so that kind of took them off the foot patrol shift, and I got some, you know, feedback from the community that very same weekend. I don't know if it was because of them being taken off, but that, you know, people weren't wearing masks in the downtown. So I just wanted to assure everyone that we're going to continue with those foot patrols of officers because we've gotten a real positive reaction from them having a presence and helping out with some of the education around mask-wearing and helping businesses with the enforcement side of this. So just wanted to, you know, assure everyone that's going to continue, and we'll talk about, you know, when we get further away from sort of the high season as to how we sort of taper back on that.
Audra, a quick question. I was asked by some of the people working on the skate park if any COVID money could be used for working on the skate park, as it's an outdoor situation, giving kids the opportunity to skate outdoors. Is there, is there any monies available and legally able to be used for that?
No, you know, there have been things that have been much more directly related to COVID, like, you know, us trying to get permitting software so that we can remotely permit and people don't need to do onsite inspections or come into the town office. You know, AV upgrades to the conference room to make it better capable of conferencing as opposed to just broadcasting, you know, things that are very directly related to COVID, we've been knocked back on, so there's no chance, unfortunately.
Just curious, I would, I would ask, thank you.
All right. Anything else, Audra?
And the last, I just want to put in another plug for absentee voting at the November 3rd election. You can request your absentee ballots. To date, we've had about 1,300 requests, and I think it'd be great if, you know, we, we keep getting them and we get, you know, as good a participation from the community in absentee voting as we did in July. We're going to run the November election very similarly to the one that we had in July, so, you know, town staff will be providing support to Katrina and running the election. And, you know, that was great, the voters were great, there were very few of them, which was greatest of all because we had such participation in absentee voting. And so hopefully we get that, you know, level of participation again for November.
Perfect. Good, that's good, that's interesting number. Yes, Jeremy?
I got a couple of things, if you don't mind.
No, only a problem I have is, Jeremy, you're a director, and there are no other directors here, so I start giving you the option of making comment. I got, I should legitimately get all the other directors here, too. So, sorry, but, anything else, Audra?
That's it.
All right. Next item would be to set a workshop dates of meeting with the select board and charter commission. I had a brief chat with the chair of the charter commission, and she's requested us to, if possible, to, because there's, I think nine of them, and obviously there's five of us plus Audra, if we could pick a couple of dates, so they could try to work around those two dates, number one. Two, because a number of them and us have jobs, they would be preferable if that meeting could be scheduled late in the day, like a 5:30 time period or something like that. So those, I wanted to pass on those comments from, from the chair. So with that, let's take a look at our calendars and pick a couple of dates that can work, we believe can work for us.
How quickly do we want to shoot for?
You know, that's a good question. I suspect what we probably should do is one date probably at the very end, we're at the 15th, we've got two weeks left in this month, maybe the very, very end of September and maybe something early October. Does that sound reasonable to you all? Or we could, or we could pick two, two dates in one week? I, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't have the answer. We just asked for two dates and preferably at 5:30 that we can make. And he, why don't, why don't we just take, I'm sorry, Alice, go ahead.
That sounds fine.
Okay, well, let me just take a quick look at my, the calendar here and take a look at, let's see, we have, the next select board meeting is October 6th. What about October 7th is one date at 5:30? That's a Wednesday.
That's good for me.
Mark or Jenna or Allison, any comment?
That, that works for me, 5:30 on a Wednesday?
Yeah, what if the, Mark would be October 7th?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be one date, and we'll call it a rain date on, let's see, Monday, the following week is a holiday, I believe, the 12th.
Tuesday, the 13th?
I would say Tuesday, the 13th.
I just want to just suppose that there's a small possibility that we will be, it's our wedding anniversary that weekend, and that we may, we're trying to get down to the Cape where we can just kind of isolate and not do anything, it probably won't happen, but.
Are you talking about the 13th, Jenna?
I'm talking about either, we have both of those needs, we won't be able to go for two weeks, but either of those dates may not work for me for that reason.
Oh.
But that's, it's really unlikely.
Okay, all right, well, point taken. Bill?
Just in case they wanted me there, I already have a hearing on the 7th of October.
Oh, oh, I didn't think about, well, it's five, it's, would that affect 5:30 at night? Bill?
Yeah, it's from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
All right.
Well, just want to do like one the week of the 13th and then one the week of the 19th, that way we have a second later week in case Jenna's gone.
That, that's fine. Why don't we peg October 14th?
I can't, I can do 13 or 15.
Oh, do 13, we're going to stay with the 13th for now, the 13th, which is a Tuesday at 5:30, and then the 21st, a Wednesday, does that work for you, Taylor?
Good for me.
The 21st of October as a secondary? All right? All right, and both of those will be at 5:30 PM.
What are the, what are the final dates, Bob? 13 and 21?
October 13, 5:30, October 21, 5:30, correct? Good. All right.
I think I'm good on the 21st, but I'm going to have to check because I've got, I just got, I just got notice of five dates.
Okay.
All for Segal Case in Belfast, and I don't think the 21st is a problem, but I'll get back to you.
We'll stay with that, Bill, and if you get a red flag, raise it as soon as you can, please. Thank you. All right, and then to our last item, which, Jeremy, you can speak to, please, is the update for, on the renewable, I'm sorry, yeah, renewable energy solar options. Audra, Jeremy, I don't know who wants to lead, just tell us where we think we're at with the various options to date.
Yeah, so I will let Jeremy go into the details, but I guess, you know, this is one thing where, you know, you kind of think you have your arms around what our options are, and something else just keeps popping up, and I think case in point is the Knox County Airport Solar Array. I just got a call from another, you know, supplier today, they're, they're not an aggregator, they do something a little bit different, and, you know, it, it's just one thing where, you know, you sort of think that you've got an idea of what the best options are around this going forward, and then another one presents itself, but I will let Jeremy sort of explain, you know, the newest and sort of closest to home opportunity with the airport.
Yeah, so, thank you. Exactly right. I think that's a good way to put it, Audra. As you know, we had talked about RFP, putting out a RFP, and then we went down the road of requesting some proposals from some solar companies out there, and I had reached out earlier this spring, I guess, to a couple of them, actually three of them, Revision Energy Encore Renewables out of Vermont and Sunraise out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Sunraise is working Sunraise is working on a project, very large project on the Perkins Road in Belfast right now, along with a couple other projects. Core Energy is also working on a couple of big projects in the coast Maine, as is Revision Energy. So I asked them all to give, give, give a proposal. They are working on that and I've actually received a couple of proposals on what they, what Encore and Sunraise would provide to the town. And this is in terms of net energy credit, tariff credits. And then all of a sudden, we had that moving forward and then all of a sudden with the CARES funding, as indicated, the airport, Knox County received a significant, I think 17 million to fund some projects at the airport for the county. And what they're looking at doing now is they put out an RFP, and I think it was StanTech might have obtained the original RFP to put together a solar feasibility study. And then they in turn, the county has since put out an RFP for solar companies to install a solar system, a very large solar system at the airport Knox County. And similarly, we would have the opportunity to buy into those credits coming out of that project. Later this month, I think early next week, the Knox County Commissioners are going to decide, make a decision on the RFP that they have, that were, the proposals that were submitted. Two of those came, one came from Synergy and another one came from Revision Energy. And I've been in close contact with Jeremy Shaw at Knox County Airport about seeing if we can participate in that and what the rates would be. They are working on that. They do have those, but that information is not yet public as the county has not yet made a decision on who they're going to go with. So likely it will be right in line with the proposals that we have received thus far. And these are, you know, solar projects that are outside of Camden, but we have the ability to tie into and receive tariff credits. As Audra indicated, another firm reached out to the town today. I believe it's Trident Energy and I'm going to be meeting with them. As, as Audra said, they're, it's a different model. They're a large energy company. It's in all sorts of sources of energy, but I will reach out to them to see what, what their proposal is. So I do see things happening. The 20 project, their initial thought that that would be online before December 2022. Now, as I understand, that has actually been reduced a year or so, it would be online before December 2021. And Encore have projects that are much quicker, you know, in pipeline. But there's a lot that goes into the solar projects now. It's much different than it used to be. I had a conversation with a solar company yesterday. Just the engineering on the central main power side of this, but upward tens of thousands of dollars, sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars, just to be able to tie into the system now for the project. So it's not, it's a very complicated situation, but we, I think it's moving forward where we have like four really good options moving forward and, and, you know, I'm hopeful that they all seem to be pretty close in, in the ballpark in, in terms of what the, the rate will be per kilowatt hour to the town. And there will be a lot of savings, I think, as well as obviously the environmental benefits of, of solar power. So I would say, Bob, in the next month or so, we, we should be able to kind of narrow down on this a little bit more than where we are right now. But, yeah, the meeting next week and they're going to make a decision on whether they're going to go with. And I'm looking forward to when that happens because that will, we'll know exactly what we'll be able to do coming from the county's airport.
Did you, did I hear you say that Knox County was billing credits?
Well, that's the proposal. So the, how this is working, and I, I don't quite understand it all, Bob. So Knox County is getting, again, they got, I think, 17 million from CARES funding. They're going to put that into the construction, the actual construction of the facility. And then the RFP, and that's what StanTech helped them do. And then the RFP that went out, that Revision and Synergy applied for is to actually, you know, operate the energy system so that they'll handle all the credits. They can't give people free energy, right? That, it can't work. So it's part of the PUC process. So they're going to have to be in line with the PUC rates, but we'll see what.
Okay.
Was that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it does because I just know that the, the lead time for net energy billing credit projects is not one year, no way. It takes a lot longer because of, because of the PUC, not because of the project itself. But that's fine. But my only, my only comment is, and that's great, you said a month or so, but I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm just, I keep, the term that keeps coming to my head is analysis paralysis and I get concerned about that. But if it's going to, because we have fundamentally detailed information for, I believe you said two, Sunraise and Encore.
Encore.
For, yeah, for net energy billing credits. And you, you think it will be just a month or so when we have the same level of information from Knox County Operations?
Oh, oh, definitely. I think it'll be within the week. I think once the, that, once the Knox County Commissioners make the deal with, where they're going to, they're going to engage in synergy or revision, that's what they're reviewing right now, what, what that, how that is going to play out. So, you know, I, within the week, we'll, we'll have something or two weeks, we'll have something from, from Knox County.
Good. So maybe we have some analysis matrices to look at on the 6th of October.
Sure. And what will be interesting, and maybe Bill Kelly can chime in on this, I don't know. I mean, a lot of this stuff is, you know, corporate, it'll be interesting to see how public some of the information go initially. And I, I mean, I, I got to touch base with a lot of these, you know, these three firms because, or two firms that I have right now because, you know, in essence, we've got two proposals from two different firms and one can come back with another proposal based on what the other one is, has just submitted. So I got to talk to Bill a little bit about, about how that process works because I know a lot of these contracts are, I don't want to say proprietary is the best word, but, you know, I need to be a little sensitive.
Good question. Is, is there any proposal termination date on Encore or Sunraise?
I have most recently been in contact with Encore and they're moving forward and they're ready, ready for us to kind of jump on board with them.
Yeah. Is the, is there any validity period on their proposals? Will they expire if we go too long?
I mean, I just got a proposal again from the, you know, I asked Encore for what their find, you know, their best offer is, and it was in line with what they gave me, you know, a few months ago.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, we'll look forward to, you know, questions in the board on, Mark, go ahead.
I'm curious, one of the things, one of the reasons we put the, the solar farm up on Sagma Farms at the time, and I'm not up on all the, the changes in, in the laws, is there was money savings to the town as the farm matured and were a point where we were saving a considerable amount of money over CMP rates as, as, and once we bought in and paid off our loan. With these proposals, are we just getting solar power and paying the same rates that we pay CMP or are there money savings for us?
No, there's cost savings. There's cost savings.
Yeah. I'm curious about that.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, that's how this is working, so.
That's a, that's a good question, Mark. We would, after, when we look at the matrix of the various options that comes to, we could.
I will, I will say, I quickly reviewed what the, what Trident sent to us today and, you know, they said 10 to, 10 to 25% cost savings from what your current energy bills are.
Right. That's what, that's what Encore should.
That was just a brief, that was their intro, you know, brief, brief information they provided.
Fine. Okay. Okay. Any questions from anybody else on the board? Mark, go ahead.
I do have another question about, I do want to ask Jeremy about some of the other things he was going to talk about. Is any of that, what the subjects were, does any of it involve the tannery? Because I get a lot of questions about that.
Yes. So very quickly, as people know, the RFP for the tannery went out on October, or just, you know, a few weeks ago. It is, expires on October 16th, but we did make a note that, that town can extend that out as far as we need necessary. I will say, I have had lots of positive feedback I've heard from about eight different entities in the state that have interest in doing something with, with tannery and submitting to the RFP. So I'm pretty encouraged. I've even seen the tannery, the Friends of Tannery Park have something going.
Right.
Very encouraged and I think, I think hopefully, you know, come October 16th, we'll be able to put proposals up and there's going to be a lot of, you know, some good ones and that we can, you know, find some common ground with, you know, the neighborhood and people that are interested in what happens there because we do have to get this process moving, right? We need a relation plan that needs to be undertaken as part of the EPA grant. It's all contingent upon what town wants to do there and is planning to do there. So we do need to move forward pretty quickly once October, end of October comes on public comments and, and, you know, figuring out how, what we're going to do there.
Right.
And end date is September of next fall.
Right.
Of next year. With extension to six months.
Thanks, Jeremy. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Hey, Bob?
Bill, you just beat the gun.
Well, you're quick on the trigger. I did look at the schedule, I found it, and I have this crazy October with meetings in Belfast on the 7th, 8th, 12th, 14th, 21st and 28th of October. So the 21st, which is your, your second meeting day for the Charter Commission Committee is not going to work for me. I'm sorry to get a stick in the mud.
All right. What if we move out?
Bill is probably more important than me. For some reason, I'm not there on the 13th.
Well, it's.
We'll get on the 13th.
This is a backup day, right? We're shooting for one meeting and.
One meeting, but it'll be either of the two days. So we have October 13th pegged, the 21st is a problem for Bill. I'm just going to suggest, what do you look like on the 28th?
Good.
Well, October 28th, no, Bill?
That's, that's, after the 13th, I'm, I've got the 14th, 21st and the 28th.
All right.
What happened to the 7th?
What, can somebody help me? Do we need to define the scope of the workshop? Maybe because I don't want to be too disappointed. I was hoping that it would be an opportunity to have some general discussions with the Charter Commission here, some of them, maybe not, you know, legal proofreading, but more philosophy of, you know, what, what may or may not need addressing in the charter. I know that they've already done lots of work on their own and, and that's fine, that's their job, but just an opportunity for us to kind of say, hey, did you think about this? Have you thought about this? This is something we've noticed or.
Right. Right.
How essential is it? I mean, I would tend to think Jenna would be more important than Bill, just.
Could be. Could be. Could be.
You're about to break the law or you're not kind of workshop, then we definitely need to.
Right. Right. You're a good point, Allison. The week of the 6th, after the 6th is out for me, I'm gone. So we have the 13th, we have to pick a second day. The, the 19th of, of October, Monday?
I, we have a debt appointment on the 19th at 3:45 that should go until about 7:00.
All right. The, Bill, the 21st, the 26th, Monday? Bill?
Just pulling it up.
Is this going to be a Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting or what?
We'll, we'll get to that detail soon because the date's tied down right now.
I'm okay, I'm okay on the 26th.
All right. We'll do, we'll try the 13th and the 26th and we'll see, we'll see what the Charter Commission has and try to push for the, the 13th and then we'll have to figure out, there's going to be a large number of people, so it may be difficult having them in one location. So may, it's going to have to either be a hybrid or, or meet in the Opera House or whatever the heck we have to do.
I feel like Zoom would be significantly easier.
I think Zoom was a great choice.
I agree.
The what?
I agree with Allison.
What?
About Zoom.
Yeah, we can do that. Well, I just, I think there is, there is, there's some people on those, on the commission who are anti-Zoom, so let's, let's let it play out. We can always do a hybrid. Anyway, well, that's a detail we'll get to. Let me get these, these dates to the, the chair and see which one works. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Bill, you keep waving your hand, Bill.
Who's saying goodbye?
Oh. All right. Motion made, the second, roll call vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bye-bye. Thank you very much. You all did a great job. It was lots of fun. See you all soon. Good night.
All right.
Good night.